At this time, I'm going to call to order our July 10th meeting of the Baldwin County Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'll ask at this time if you'll stand with me. We'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Father, we're thankful to you for this great county we live in. Father, it's obviously a great place to live. Many of us have known it that way because we've lived here all of our lives. We have many people that want to be here, so Father, it's obviously a good place to live. And Father, we're charged here to do our best to manage what happens in this county, and we just pray you'd give us insight and wisdom in that. I pray all that we do tonight, as I say before, shows respect to each other and honors you. And Father, we want to pause and just ask that you would bless those in the state of Texas that have gone through such a horrific flooding there that have caused loss of life just beyond measure. So Father, we just pray for those people, pray for your care on them. And we're so thankful that we're blessed people here, and we just now ask that you will be with us through this night. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'll do a roll call. Brendan Bias.
Here.
Robert Davis.
Here.
Scott Schamberger.
Here.
Michael Mullik.
Here.
Greg Seibert.
Here.
Jamie Stradiger.
Here.
Diane Burnett.
Here.
Michael Fletcher. George Waters.
Here.
Reed Key. Okay, we have a quorum. All right, I keep forgetting we had an item here. So we have our agenda that has been printed for us. Do I have a motion that the agenda be approved as outlined?
So moved.
All right. Mr. Seibert's made a motion that we approve our agenda. I have a second.
Second.
Jamie Stradiger. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So also at this time, you've had a copy of the minutes of our last meetings of July, excuse me, of June 5th. So I'm going to ask for a motion that we approve those minutes.
So moved.
Was that Scott?
Yes, sir.
Now, that was second?
Second.
I heard Michael on that one, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. All right, with that, Mr. Dixon, do you want to, you want me to go ahead and do these first?
Go ahead and do them first, yeah.
All right. We'll go ahead and handle the items on our consent agenda. I will read these out, and we've already discussed these in our work session. So the first case is PER 25-25 Mill Creek subdivision, phase two through three extension is an extension request. PER 25-28 The Highlands at Fish River subdivision, phase one, two, three, and four, extension. And then PER 25-29 Tealwood subdivision, phase one and two, this is an extension. All right, do I have a motion that these items as listed on our consent agenda be approved?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Seibert's made a motion. We approve these. Do I have a second?
Second.
Scott, seconded motion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, so before we go into our public hearing items, Mr. Dixon, I'll let you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, we have several public hearings for you all tonight. Just as a reminder, the applications that require public hearings by our regulations are any kind of subdivision, subdivision variances, highway construction setback appeals, site plan approvals, and any kind of subdivision regulation or zoning ordinance amendment. So we don't have any ordinance amendments today, but we do have pretty much everything else on the list there. Our public hearing guidelines, so when you come to the, the public comments should all be made during the public hearing portion of the meeting. When you come to the podium, you can state your name clearly to the microphone as the meeting is being recorded, so we want to make sure we document everything properly. Comments should be directed to the planning commission chairman, and he can send those comments out to whoever he needs for answers. Comments should be focused on the application being presented at that time, and then comments from individuals are limited to three minutes, and if you're speaking on behalf of a group, just let the chairman know, and he can grant you five minutes to speak on behalf of the group. With subdivision cases, we go through this every month. Just to be clear, though, the state law is very clear that if the subdivision case meets all of our regulations, that the planning commission has no discretion but to approve the subdivision that does conform to regulations. So a lot of times, you'll hear us say that, but that's why we have to act the way we do when we take action on these items. But anything else, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, sir. All right, with that, we'll open a public hearing for our first item, which is PUD 25-06 and SV 25-11. This is the County Road 55 RV Storage. Does anybody need to declare prior communication on this item? Okay, Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This commercial project known as, proposed as County Road 55 RV Storage is a commercial planned unit development located in Planning District 11 at the intersection of Underwood Road and County Road 55. The proposed development encompasses over seven building units for RV storage. I'm going to skip here. The public utilities provided are Riviera, EMC, Baldwin County Source Service, and Bright Speed. There were no wetlands identified in the subject property, and all drainage improvements were reviewed and accepted by the Planning and Zoning Permit Engineer. The subdivision property of this location is included with the subdivision in useful jurisdiction of the city of Foley. As bad sold mostly, the two lot subdivision that created this lot was approved by the city. However, following further discussion with the city, it was determined that due to the ongoing revisions to the city's regulations for multi-occupancy, multi-leased projects, the authority to review and take action should be proposed to Baldwin County Planning Commission. Here, staff is recommending approval of the planned unit development and the subdivision variance, so the planning commissioner is aware the outlined conditions, specific conditions, have been met by a revised site plan provided from the consultant. Here is your subject property and your site plan reflecting all the buildings. Here is your landscaping plan. The applicant is providing a 10-foot buffer as required by the subdivision regulations adjoining all parcels and the roadways. The applicant has requested a subdivision variance from a few sections, the first one being usable open space requirement, the second being the encroachment of stormwater detention pond into the landscape buffer, and the third being the 20-foot easement access for the detention pond. Due to the requirement that Baldwin County Highway Department and Planning and Zoning has asked for a dedication of additional right-of-way, staff has made a conclusion of support the subdivision variance to allow for the project to still be in compliance to some sections and others not due to the right-of-way dedication. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay, no questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Austin, did you want to come up and speak?
If y'all have any questions, I'll go.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for the engineer? All right. I don't know if y'all are going to change this for me to, I just have to go through all of them.
I don't believe.
I guess I have some questions about these three, the variances.
Okay.
You know, it's, open space requirement, how far off were we on open space?
So they provided, what is the minimum required of open space? The required is 1.2 acres, and they provided 1.7 acres, and what they are asking a variance from is the usable open space, which is your typical recreational areas of like trails and such things like that. But they are actually providing more than what's required for open space.
Okay. And the stormwater detention basin, you know, that's on number two, and to the landscape buffer into the, I guess that is along the road?
Yes, sir. So our amended and newly adopted subdivision regulations prohibits your landscaping plan to encroach in your stormwater management areas, and due to the fact that this project has had to give us, provide a robust dedication of right-of-way, they've had to kind of shift their design where they are still able to provide the full buffer of 10 feet, but they are having to encroach that buffer into the stormwater management areas.
In the stormwater detention, it looks like it goes around three-quarter of the property.
It goes around basically the perimeter of the whole parcel.
And I guess that ties into number three with the, with the, I mean, it seems if, with it just coming in. In all directions, it looks with six buildings instead of seven on this footprint, you know, helpless to.
Yeah, within, maybe not have to have three variances, maybe only one, you know?
That's a question.
Okay, let me make sure Michael got ahead on me. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak on this item that didn't sign up? Okay. All right, any other questions? Comments? Okay. Ms. Waters, anything else you need to add?
No, sir. Just whenever you make your action, if you can do the variance before the PUD application.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve SV 25-11, subject to staff conditions.
Okay. Mr. Bias has made a motion that we approve the variance. Do you have a second?
Seconded.
Mr. Seibert, seconded motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries. Chairman votes aye. I was meant to tell you that a while ago. Sorry, Brenda. All right, now, back to the.
I'll make a motion to approve PUD 25-06, subject to staff conditions.
Okay. Mr. Bias submitted motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Davis is seconding the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Chairman votes aye, so motion carries. All right. Our next item is the PUD 25-07 Guff Country RV Park. Does anybody need to declare prior communication on this item? Ms. Booth?
Good evening. So this is a proposal for a 13-lot RV park. It is an existing park that's located on Patterson Road in the Wilcox community. This has been previously reviewed by the Planning Commission. On October 5th, 2023, it was approved with conditions. There has not been a subdivision permit issued as of yet, but the, as I want to reiterate, it is an existing RV park, and so they're just bringing it in compliance. The utilities are already existing. They are East Central Water. They have onsite septic already approved by the Baldwin County Health Department, and EMC is the electrical provider. There are no wetlands that appear on the subject property. The drainage report has been reviewed by internal staff and approved by the permit engineer. This is your site plan, and the only specific conditions that we have are that they have already submitted their commercial plan review. No improvements or construction commence until it has been reviewed and approved, and subdivision permit has been issued, and then the final site plan shall be recorded after the installation of any improvements and prior to the application of building permits. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions for staff?
I meant to ask this during the workshop. The subject system, does it collect all the lots, or does each lot have its own individual system?
I'm going to let the engineer that's here on record answer that for you.
Good. Any other questions for staff?
I have one question on the paved surface. What is the paving surface, or what, you know, material surface, I guess, from Patterson Road? Is it dirt?
I believe it's gravel, but again, I'll let Chris answer that when he gets up.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Chris, I hope you're ready, because it sounds like the questions are for you.
Good evening. I'm glad I'm not last on the agenda tonight. To answer your question about the septics, there are four septic fields out there to service the 13 units, so a couple of them are tied together. But the flows from RVs are typically less than single-family residences, so it's been through the process, it's been vetted through the health department, and we're abiding by all their rules.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because we're splitting the lots, so.
Right. And so it's going to be maintained under one entity, so if there's anything wrong with the septic tanks, the owner will have to go out there and fix them if something were to happen. But they are aware that they're on shared septic tanks and systems.
Okay. I just didn't want to be in any conflict in the future if they split it up and sell a lot off and try to find out if they got to put a new septic tank in. They weren't aware.
I get it. And part of the road is already paved in concrete. That's the back half for lots, looks like six through the end, six, seven, yeah, six through the end, and then the front half is going to be crushed asphalt or gravel.
Okay. Any other questions for Chris? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one more comment.
Okay.
Robert, if they do decide to move forward and bring these lots into compliance, they would have to bring the lots into compliance to be able to sell them. They would have to turn in a preliminary plat, and then they would have to make modifications to meet those conditions.
Thank you for that, ma'am.
All right. Unless you have any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, occasion number PUD 25-27.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Davis made a motion to approve. Ms. Schamberger seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion?
Will we get complete staff with staff conditions?
Those include staff conditions. Any other questions on the motion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye. Motion carries. All right, next item is case number S25-28 White House Creek Estates, Phase Two subdivision. Anybody need to declare prior communication on this item? All right, Jay, you were supposed to introduce us to any new, any new folks. I'm lost now.
Hi, I'm Jenny. Jenny Mosley. Okay, this proposal is for the second phase of a large lot subdivision. It's case number SC2528 of the White House Estates subdivision, I'm sorry, Estates, Phase Two. It's in Planning District 9. It is unzoned. The proposed lots are going to be three lots. Excuse me? Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, so sorry. It's going to be three lots. The smallest lot size is going to be 38 acres. It is less than 50 lots, so per section 5.514, the no-traffic study, and it's also exempt from the drainage due to section 4.5.8 of the large acre subdivisions. Here's the location. Here's our plat map. And here is our phases. You can see phase one, which was approved in April of '25. It did actually, lot number three was all of phase two, and then they came back and said that they wanted to subdivide three into actually three lots. So the proposal for phase two of the White House Estates subdivisions is a large acre subdivision, all the lots front on a 60-foot ingress egress. Staff recommends approval, and the only condition is to just clean the plat.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for staff? Thank you. Taylor Giles, did you want to speak?
No, unless y'all have any questions.
All right. Anybody have any questions for the agent? Okay. Then also had Kevin Pimperell, she want to speak?
Yeah, I just.
You need to come up to the podium, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to see if I could get more information. Where can I get information on the lot, the info that she was showing on the presentation? Is that publicly available?
Yeah, it's on the, if you go to the upcoming meeting on the Baldwin County Planning and Zoning webpage, all these cases are on there. You can pull up the plat and everything that's on there.
Okay, okay. My property joins the lot for, I was curious on future plans, too. Are there, does this, is it going to be further subdivided, or is?
Not that we're necessarily aware of, but if they did, they would have to come back before us.
Okay.
It would be publicly, you know, publicly advertised again and notices sent out.
Yep. Okay, that's all. And I'd also like to see if I can find contact information for the developer, just so I can.
Contact for who? For the applicant, or are you talking about for the agents here? So I mean, you could talk to him in the back.
For the agent, yeah.
Yeah, he's in the back if you want to catch you.
I just wanted to swap contact information in case we need it. That's all I've got.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I had signed up to speak on this item. Was there anybody else?
Steve, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a comment that the lots are not big enough to be replatted as a large acre subdivision, since anytime they come back for a replat, each lot would have to be at least 20 acres, and it looks like all the lots are less than 38 acres or around 38 acres, so they won't be able to do a large acre subdivision in the same sense.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? I'll close the public, I'm going to close the public hearing. No questions, I'll entertain a motion. No questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve SC25-28, subject to staff conditions.
All right, Mr. Bice made a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
I heard Michael over here, so I'll give it to Michael. Second the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we'll open the public hearing for case number SPP25-14, Estates of Pine Grove Subdivision. Does anybody need to declare prior communication on this item? None? Okay.
Okay, this proposal is for a large lot subdivision. There's gonna be a total of 12 lots in the subdivision. This is case number SPP2514, Estates of Pine Grove. It's in Planning District Five and is unzoned. The smallest lot will be a hundred, a little bit over 115 square feet. The drainage improvement study was prepared by Blue Water Design and accepted by the permit engineer. What am I doing? And of course, I'm doing it again. Okay. So sorry, y'all. Here's the location map. Here's the plat map. And as you can see, on County Road 57, we are requiring them to have common drives, and that is so way, that way they meet the highway access requirements. Staff analysis, all proposed lots will have road frontage on County Road, Maintain Road, Pine Grove Extension, and County Road 57. Due to the highway functional classification of Pine Grove Road as a major collector, a minimum distance of 240 feet between driveways is required per the highway access management policy. This results in the requirement of the installation of common driveways for Lot 1 through 10 that front Pine Grove Road. Our only conditions on this is, of course, the common driveways for those said lots, and then also that Lot 10, since it fronts both 57 and Pine Grove Road, that it only have access from County Road 57, and that any future crossings in the wetlands areas, the applicant will need to apply for an FLD and provide all the proper state and federal permits, and all other general conditions will apply. Y'all have any questions?
Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. I have no one signed up to speak on this item, is that right? All right, unless you have questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion on this
I'll make a motion to approve case number CSP24-45 with conditions set forth by staff.
Which one? Yes.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Davis made a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Any of the subject staff conditions, right? Mr. Bice has seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're down to some site plan reviews now. We have, the first one, we'll open the public hearing for case number CSP24-45, the May Brothers Firework Stand. Does anybody need to declare prior communication on this item? Okay. Ms. Rhodes?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is case CSP2445, the May Brothers Firework Stand. The request is for a 32 by 70-foot firework stand. Here's the location of the property within the county. The subject property is located at the intersection of County Road 99 and US Highway 98 in the Lillian Community. The zoning of the property is B2 Neighborhood Business District. It's approximately .84 acres, and the current use is vacant. Here's the locator map and the site map. The subject property is surrounded by B2 zoning with either commercial or vacant land use. Here's the subject property and adjacent property images. In terms of staff analysis, the proposed plan for the firework stand conforms to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The development pattern in the area is primarily commercial, and there is a neighborhood center node approximately .3 miles to the northwest of the subject property, and this would support the current zoning and use of the property. There's also commercial properties that contain a firework stand nearby, and it can be concluded that the firework stand complies with the master plan. Here's the site plan, and the future land use map showing that neighborhood center node, the grading and drainage plan, as well as the erosion control plan, and their landscaping plan. Staff's recommendation is approval with the following conditions. I do want to point out, the first condition, which was recently added, is that the engineer of record was to work with staff to develop an acceptable turnout configuration for highway. Additional requirements may be needed, and then all the other conditions are our general conditions. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Corey, in dissent, does the proximity of the neighborhood center node override the, what the future land use map says, that this should be ideal conservation or preservation? Or is this, or this and the next couple of cases, is this gonna be one of those situations where the future land use map is basically wrong?
Well, I mean, it is not correct here, because it's, one, it's already zoned B2. So this isn't like a zoning case where we're trying to evaluate the rezoning application based on the future land use map. This is already zoned to allow this by right. So we're just showing how it fits the zoning ordinance and how it fits with the master plan, but yes.
But it doesn't, but that's just it, Jay, it doesn't fit with the master plan.
But what I'm saying is, the master plan doesn't factor into by right site plan approvals.
I understand that, but it's, but it's just, it's very, this is the ultimate in coincidences that, you know, the next three cases are all gonna, with the exception of the one that's rural and LID, are gonna be in direct contradiction to what the future land use map says really should go there.
Right, because the future land use map never was synced up with the zoning map. Like, the zoning map had zoning designations for a lot of properties, they called it something different, yeah.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Just one quick question. In the plans of the building, is there any mention or anything of a fire suppression system, sprinklers or something?
That would all come in with the building plans. We don't, we don't have any of those yet.
Anything else? I have several signed up to speak, so I'll make sure we get our questions in. All right, I've got Jonathan Petty as the engineer, and Garrett May as the property owner, so I don't know if either of you guys are tag teaming or one's speaking, so.
I've heard of the last.
And you're.
Public's comments.
And you're who?
Jonathan Petty, the engineer.
Okay, so Mr. May, did you want to speak? Yeah, come on in.
How are y'all doing? Thank you. I'm Garrett May, owner of the property. My brother and I own the business and the property, and basically what we're trying to do is just create a new building as opposed to what we have there, clean it up, make it nicer, make it look better, and just give, you know, our little piece of property the best looking place that we can have, put in new landscaping, and just upgrade, and make it nicer, is basically what we're trying to do, so, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question with, for him.
Yes, sir.
Are there any plans for any type of fire suppression system in the building when it's constructed?
Not as of right now. That's not a, it's not a requisition by the state or the county for a firework stand as of now, so we don't have any plans for that right now.
All right. I have in opposition Asa Boyer. I probably said that name wrong, and I apologize upfront.
Thank you, Commissioners. Asa Boyer, I represent the owner of the property to the north that's depicted as the red building you saw previously. We just wanted to voice our concerns while we appreciate that the May Brothers have modified their site plan to include the full 12 parking places as required rather than the eight that they were seeking previously. We don't believe through experience that those 12 parking places are nearly enough. It's a very busy intersection. We have a parking area of 36 parking places, and it still fills up during the specific times that are referenced in the staff's analysis and findings, when it says that they believe that the use is consistent with the community welfare and should not attract from the public's convenience, due in part to the store's limited seasonal hours of operation. During those limited hours of operation, there are four adjacent parcels that are also conducting the same business during those same limited hours of operation, and those four established businesses are all overwhelmed during that time. There are people parking along the sides of the roads, there are people parking, you know, waiting to get into these parking lots, and I believe even just a few, maybe two years ago, there was an incident where someone was actually hit while trying to cross 98, going from one place to another. And so while we don't disagree that everything appears to be in line with the ordinances as specified, the minimum requirements of the ordinances, we just wanted to voice our concern regarding the busyness of this intersection and in favor of the community's welfare for how busy this intersection truly is, especially during those limited hours that firework stands operate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity. Full disclosure, I'm the competitor, so I'm right across the street. They mentioned 12 parking spaces at my stand right in front of Circle K. I counted that number of cars that were in my parking lot, and we coordinate with Circle K behind us, and many times I had 40 to 47 cars in our parking space, and we're a 900-square-foot building. My biggest concern, competition is not my concern. In 1988, when I started, there was a building directly behind where Circle K is now, and the best thing happened to us was the competition with USA Fireworks, because everybody in Pensacola heard about the competition and came down to the corner in Lillian. So we're competing against Shelton Fireworks up on the interstate, which I'm sure y'all know about, and so competition is gonna help us. My concern is the traffic flow right there on 99 and 98, because you're gonna have to cut across traffic into their stand. People are gonna park in our parking lot across the street at the red stand and walk across the street. Our parking lot was full, and I'll be happy to try to provide pictures for you, to show you that. I've got storage containers there, and it's difficult for me to get in and out of there myself to get anything out of our storage containers. So it's not the competition I'm concerned about, it's the traffic flow and the danger to people making a left-hand turn across traffic on 99. If they came off of 98, you're having to turn left to go across traffic, and that's where the concern is. So I appreciate your consideration about the traffic flow. Last time, the engineer said it's only a short season. I agree with him absolutely, he's absolutely right. 92% of our business comes on the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th of July. So if we're a, you know, large sales volume, it's gonna happen on the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th of July. You can put, you can put two parking spaces out there between July the 5th and July the 2nd of next year, and you're not gonna be full. So, but on the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, it is an extreme amount of people going to be at that location, our location, the location across the street, and it's gonna be difficult for people to get in, get out, and it's, I'm worried about the safety situation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, a couple people signed up neutral on this.
Good afternoon, thank you for listening to me. I just want to make sure I understand something before my time starts, that it is not an additional fireworks store. I think Mr. May would know the answer. Miss, yes?
That's our goal for now, is to move ours from what we have now to the new ones.
Okay, so this would not be an additional fireworks store? That's important because of redundancy issues. May I have five minutes? I have over 150 people that have emailed me. Thank you. I'm here to basically say that we want to urge you to prioritize safety improvements at this intersection, Highway 98 and County Road 99. We are not opposed to the fireworks store. We know that they have every right to use their property as they wish with the proper zoning. This is not just simply a matter of a left turn and a right turn, as I think I heard Mr. Lundey say in the working session. May I have next slide, please?
Yes.
I forgot I had photos. Maybe one or two more? Two, again? Again? Yes, right here. This is the 99 going north with, crossing over 98 at this location. We currently have a right turn yield sign, which a lot of people, I don't know why, maybe from other places in the country, don't know what yield means, but regardless, they don't yield many times. Then there is traffic on coming from 99 on the north side. They are very confused as to what the other drivers are gonna do there, because there's not really a left turn lane. The people in the left lane there that you see may turn left, or they may go straight. It is very, very, very confusing. The issue that they say they have addressed about from 7th Street forward north with widening and possible turnout lanes is wonderful, because that is absolutely a necessity. However, they have not addressed anything to do with County Road 99 coming south. If you could please go forward on those slides again, 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 again. This, this is approaching Highway 98 from the north side of County Road 99. To the right, you see the entrance to the one of the, Mr. Anderson's fireworks store. To the left, there are containers that sell fireworks for 40 days out of the year. Across the road there is the current trailer Mr. May sells fireworks from. And then, one more, please? Maybe two more? This, and this is the other one that is on the other corner. So we have all four corners of fireworks at this intersection, so needless to say, there is an abundant amount of traffic there throughout the year, anyway, because we have Spanish Cove, a KOA RV, and a boat launch, all not far from this intersection. The traffic signal arrows at County Road 99 North, I think, should be absolutely looked at, and turn lanes, and road widening. The entire intersection, we urge you to, we plead with you actually, for a traffic study. In this instance, I know some of you are familiar with the area, and we respectfully request a traffic study at this time. If there were ever a time for planning and zoning to ask for a traffic study. If there were ever a time for planning and zoning to ask for a traffic study, I have to ask why not in this instance? Would there be any harm in that? Our community counts on you to protect us from preventable hazards and this intersection's current state poses a clear and immediate risk. Lillian being unincorporated, you are in effect our town council. If we cannot come to you, then where do we go? And that's all I have. Thank you.
I had also signed up as neutral as Bill Gonzalez.
I really just want to add to Tracy's thing about the intersection being so confusing. If there were not yield right-of-way signs on 99, a person coming up to the intersection seeing a green light would know that they could go straight or make a right turn. The yield right-of-way sign means that they can make a right turn with that turn lane as long as it doesn't interfere with traffic on 98. But when you put the yield right-of-way sign there and you're looking at a green light and a yield right-of-way sign, at that intersection, it's confusing people and people coming south on 99 and get to 98 to make a left turn think that the person that's going north and going to make a right turn has got a yield right-of-way sign, so they have to yield to the person coming from the north making a left turn. And in most every situation, right, in a country where you drive on the right side of the road, a right turn has priority over a left turn, so it's a very confusing intersection and needs some work done on it.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Petty, you're the only one left.
Good afternoon, staff. My name is Jonathan Petty with Axis Engineering Group. So I just want to sort of reiterate what the developer said, that this is really just sort of a replacement for the trailer that's currently there right now into a better-looking, newer fireworks stand. To address the parking concern, there is a plan in the future in which we understand that there could be a number of parking spaces that are not available on our spot. So the current fireworks stand that's there now has approximately 35 parking spaces that could end up being that overflow zone right there. And that would tremendously help the entire parking situation for everybody, not just us, but for everyone around. That way, they don't have to have concerns with people walking across the street, which I haven't seen nor has our developer seen. But I think that sort of addresses that concern there. I'm here to answer any questions y'all may have.
Is the current structure going to be removed?
There are no plans of that right now, but...
So you're going to add a building, have that trailer, the modular, whatever it is, sitting there, but your long-term expectation is that people are going to park in front of the old building to walk to the new building?
They could possibly if there was some overflow there, if necessary. But the plan for now is just to use what is required by the county.
But the bottom line is, they're still going to have to come to the intersection, make a left turn and then turn, or either turn left across 98 at the bottom of the red light.
You're coming from the Florida side?
If you're coming from the Florida side. So you're going to get to the bottom of the bridge and have to turn left across 98 there or go to the red light, turn left there and then left back into the...
Right, as it is right now.
As it is right now. I lived there for 16 years, so I'm very familiar with that disastrous intersection.
Yes, sir.
That's... There's no good way to do that without, I mean, I don't care if you have 100 parking places, you know, for people to get in front of that, you know, that one for the fireworks stand. That's a lot of left turns and granted, maybe it's three or four days out of the year at the 4th of July and New Year's Eve, but there's, that's a recipe for disaster. Thanks.
All right, any other questions for the engineer?
I have a question. The existing building is on a separate parcel than what the proposed building is.
Right.
So you're saying that's a lot of record and can be sold, correct, at any given time?
Say again.
That's a lot of record where the existing building is? It's a lot of record, yes. It's a parcel.
Yeah, it's its own parcel.
And it can be sold at any time? So there's no guarantee unless you make this one parcel that that's actually going to be used for overflow parking?
Which could be a plan in the future as well. It's a possibility.
Total parcel, I'm just looking at this on land glide, is about 1.9 acres. Is that right?
Yeah, approximately.
Mr. May, both pieces combined? That's right. And, I mean, it looks like, you know, you've got .3 acres with the other site, so it seems like there's adequate enough space there for me. I'm not familiar with the area, the location, but it just seems to me there's more parking potentially to be provided here than there would be the surrounding sites. Is that fair?
Yes, but because of the constraints that there was not availability to design for more parking, we did up it from 8 to 12 and we made room for it, as you would see from the past variants that we received.
Go ahead.
Any other questions, staff?
Any other questions?
Just for clarification, because it's a little hard to read on our printout, on the map that we have up on the screen right there, the site plan, that gray area where the existing building is that kind of wraps into the southeastern corner of this parcel, is that floodplain or what does that gray color represent?
Yeah, that's a wetland area right there in a floodplain.
The gray area appears to be on the legend, existing zone VE, so it's the flood zone.
Okay, it's a flood zone, okay. Yeah, I mean, I have some concerns with, you know, I mean, we've talked about parking a little bit ad nauseam, but nobody's brought up the issue that if somebody was to turn into that parking lot and all 12 spaces were occupied, then the person has to back out onto 98. I don't quite see the space there for a turnaround. And I know you've got the backing lane on the eastern side of the parking lot, but I just have some concerns about the kind of circulation of it. And Corey, this question for you or staff, do we require onsite refuse? Because I noticed they've got a label for the existing refuse collection on the other parcel will be used for the proposed development.
I am not 100% sure about the means beyond the parcel.
As Ms. Burnett said earlier, there are two different lots of record, so each would have to kind of stand alone.
So the current...
But they could do a rollout. It doesn't have to be necessarily a dumpster. It could be a rollout, yeah.
Yeah, I think I would feel a little bit better if we saw this as a CSP for both parcels together to see how they would function long-term together, even if it was as overflow, so we could at least document that.
Any other comments, questions?
I would tend to agree with Brandon and Scott that if these were combined, then you would probably alleviate a lot of the concerns, at least that I have, in terms of flow and traffic and parking, you know, for that matter, because as it sits right now, this is just not a great plan.
Okay, I don't think we have any questions, so I don't want to make you stand up there. I was trying to see if anybody had anything. All right, so any other comments or questions?
With that floodplain, the floodzone area being marked, no new construction could take place there in the future, could it?
Yeah, any new construction, as well, as far as building construction, would have to, you know, meet the flood requirements and everything like that. So with it being a V-zone, it puts a lot of limitations in it.
Could they do parking there?
They do parking there, yeah.
I think that just kind of reiterates my point that a CSP covering both.
I mean, I think you're correct is that, you know, if it was kind of looked at as one total site, it certainly opens up a lot more opportunities for onsite circulation to circulate from 98 through to 99 and help that whole situation out. They do have wetlands on the south side that they would have to work around, but it does seem like it would make it flow better.
Yeah, I would say, look, for clarity, for me, I was looking at the, I know we got circulation, but, I mean, this subject parcel's twice as big as the one across the street, so we can't punish the property owner for the left-in, left-out access and the location that's already been granted to them, in my mind, so.
All right, any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for staff. You know, they're, well, a statement and then a question, how about that? There's different criteria for parking for businesses. I know they don't say fireworks stand. So what criteria? Was it retail?
It would be commercial.
Commercial.
And it would be one space for every 200 square feet of gross floor area.
Okay, and this meets that?
Mm-hmm.
And to Mr. Schamberger's point is that, you know, they're meeting all the technical requirements as far as parking. We get that there's a seasonal demand, it's no different than when you go to the mall at Christmas, you know, they're going to have seasonal peaks that you just can't really handle, but you can't plan for that year-round. So the parking, you know, in my mind, is not really the issue. I do think there could be some improvements with site circulation and Mark can probably, you know, talk a lot more about the intersection improvements that are actually already underway. And I think that was a lot of discussion about circulation too, so I'll let him talk about that.
We've already been looking at this intersection from the highway department's standpoint to widen the intersection out as you approach US 98 to provide more stacking, because it is predominantly a left or right movement out of there. There's really not a lot that goes across that, at that location. As far as any other issues with that signal or the potential confusion of that intersection, we'll be glad to take a look at that. It's our intersection, we maintain the signal as well. But as far as the near future, I think within a couple of weeks, we're scheduled to go ahead and widen that intersection out and add more stacking to make it easier for the motors that get up there, that if they're going left, they can get in the left lane, if they're going right, they can get in the right lane. So that's definitely going to help improve that intersection.
And I think I heard you say, Mark, earlier at the work session, this is something y'all were already planning on doing before this...
Yes.
Not for this site, but it's something you were planning for that intersection all along?
It is. We have other projects on County Road 99 ongoing as we speak and as part of those particular improvements, we're not at this location, a little further in, we're widening the road, adding a multi-use, well, I'd say it's a widened shoulder down one side of it. And so the whole road's scheduled for resurfacing and before we resurface any road, we look at doing widening projects, shoulder widening projects, any kind of restriping, and that's part of this process. So it was already planned and ongoing before this site plan was even reviewed by staff.
Mark, I have a question. Is there a traffic signal at this intersection currently?
Yes.
Second, does this, you know, where all of our focus seems to be on 98, south of 98, and, you know, we looked at it from the north side, has that been inclusive in this study as the approach on 99 from the north to 98? And, you know, as part of this, you know, as a full-scale overview?
Yeah, we can, our staff can easily look at both sides of the intersection. We've got traffic counters we put out, so we can evaluate that intersection to see if there's any adjustments that are needed for the signal timings.
Okay, I didn't have anybody else signed up, so I want to be sure I close the public.
I guess as a question...
Close the public hearing. Go ahead, Mike.
You know, and I guess this might be a question for Ms. Bartel. With that, does that pass, you know, without calling for a... Traffic study, you know, where, you know, county has stuff in the works and, you know, look at this intersection from all angles as, you know... Instead, in lieu of an official traffic study?
The intersection, I mean, this particular proposed development would not trigger a traffic study in and amongst itself. So for us to look at the intersection, it would be self-imposed on us and we're glad to do that.
All right.
May I say something to respond?
No, ma'am.
No.
I'll close the public hearing. Sorry.
I thought you asked a question.
Oh, that's, yes, ma'am.
Really, a comment. I believe I heard, y'all tell me if I heard right, the owner, well, developer, agent, say that they would provide overflow parking because they understand it's needed one time a year, pretty much. Did you hear that? Because they were addressing parking, a comment from parking, not our comment, I don't think, another comment.
I think, I will concur, that's what you heard. I think I would rather see it memorialized somehow.
See, if you're, if we can require that, we need it to be on one parcel and designated as overflow parking on a site plan. If I heard correctly and if y'all agree. I mean, just asking.
I mean, there's certainly enough discretion in the review criteria for a site plan that we could, you know, if the board chooses to table it and say, hey, can you give us on your plan where you can provide overflow parking? You know, it's, it would, you know, the fact is, they're meeting the parking requirements for the use though. So it's not, it would have to be more of a voluntary thing.
We didn't ask for it.
Right. So, yeah, you could ask that question and see if they would be willing to do that.
All right, any other questions, comments?
I just have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with Ms. Burnett. Mr. Jetties, Petty, did comment and makes, make aware, is aware that they could possibly using the one next door for overflow and that there's a possibility that they could sell the lot next door, he addressed that question, and also a possibility of joining the two lots and making one bigger or one combined. So I think with all of those questions out there, it is a possibility to table it, to answer those questions. We didn't bring them up. They were acknowledged by the applicant that this is going to be an issue that needs to be addressed and no, it's not a requirement.
Jay, this site plan meets the parking requirements?
It does.
Okay, so, I mean, we're heading in a...
Right. I think, and it meets the area dimensional requirements because it's a lot of record currently, so there's not, we can't request they join the lots.
Yeah, we're way outside of our purview here.
Right. We could request some interconnectivity between circulation between the two lots. That's totally within our purview to do. So that would be something they could look at. It's like, how do you connect vehicles from parking, the existing parking lot on the east side to the proposed parking lot on the west side? And that's a very common application in commercial uses like this, is have the interconnectivity to have multiple points of access. That, from a circulation standpoint, that is certain, that we are pretty solid we could look at, but, but, Mr. Schamberger, you're right. that we, we are pretty solid we could look at. But, but, Mr. Schamberger, you're right, is that the fact is, they meet the area dimensional standards, they meet the parking requirements. There's nothing we can really do to say, you, you have to provide more parking, you know. But we can say, you need to improve your site circulation.
Yeah.
And as far as site circulation, that could be done as a condition of approval. Like, you don't, we could work the-
It can be done as a condition or approval, or if they decide to make improvements to the adjacent parcel, at that time, we can suggest that that circulation plan be updated.
That's correct. Yeah.
We can't require them to remove the lot lot or force things to remove the lot.
No, we cannot require that. There are two existing lots of record. They both meet the area dimensional standards. There's just nothing that we can do to make that.
Back to the root. I mean, we gotta treat it as two separate parcels. We can't-
That's right. But what's said, we can require them to have interconnectivity for cars between the sites. That is a very common-
Even whether it be in a second parcel?
Yes.
Even whether it be in a separate parcel, we can do that. Okay.
That would help my issue with that circulation, guy. I think about those three busy days that somebody did have to back out onto 98 because the 12 spaces are full.
And then they can use both parking lots for both businesses. I mean, it's, it's, it's a very common application in commercial, you have areas where you have shared parking agreements and interconnectivity. And it's, I mean, just try to treat the whole thing as one big site, even though they are technically two separate sites.
Do y'all have an issue with that request? Do y'all have an issue with the request of adding, uh, better circulation through both lots and add overflow lot, putting that on the plan?
Adding to the current site plan right now?
Correct.
As a condition?
Yes.
Yes.
So, if we add it as a condition, then we'll rely on staff to validate that.
It wouldn't have to come back. Y'all could handle that administratively.
Yeah, we could handle that administratively. If you wanna put that in your conditions, uh, we can, we can work that out in staff level.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, I'm hearing several different things going on. If we table it, be sure you're tailing and requesting what additional information you want. Or if it's conditions to be added, be sure you're very clear about the conditions if you're gonna make a motion to approve. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve case number CSP 24-45 according to staff recommendations.
Okay, Mr. Schamberger has made the motion to approve it. Um, ask for staff comments. Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burnett, second the motion. Any questions on the motion?
So, that motion does not include Scott, the cross parcel.
It does not.
It does. She added, Cora just added revise the site plan to-
But you need to say it.
She did. She added it.
Oh. Well, I think what Scott was saying is his motion did not include that.
My motion was not going to include it. I was accepting it as presented.
'Cause I can take it out if you-
All right. His motion does not include it. So, we're gonna go with that. This is why Scott's made the motion. And Diane, you seconded the motion?
No.
You're not seconding that motion?
No, because I saw her update the conditions and I thought that was part of the condition.
All right. So, Mr. Schamberger has made a motion with staff conditions as originally were. Do I have a second on that motion? All right, that motion dies. Lack of a second. Uh, entertain another motion.
Cora, can you put that statement back up there for us to read? I would say probably adjacent lot to the east, just for clarification. And that's gonna be subject to staff approval.
All right. So, if she's added this to the list, so somebody needs to make a motion if you're including that in the motion now.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, subject to staff conditions with the addition of revising the site plan to show interconnectivity between the subject property and the adjacent lot to the east for better circulation, subject to staff approval.
All right. Mr. Weiss has made the motion approved. Subject to those conditions, have a second?
Second.
Mr. Davis seconded that motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Was there more than one opposed?
No, I accidentally hit my mic stem.
Okay. And chairman votes aye. So, motion carries. All right, we'll go to our next item, uh, which is actually three items. Uh, we will open the public hearing for case number CSP 25-03, PUD 25-02, and SV 25-12, the Binger Storage. Ms. Rhodes?
I think-
Oh, let me see. Anybody need to declare prior communication on this item? Okay?
All right. This is case CSP 2503, PUD 2502, and the variance SV 2512 for Binger Storage. Their request is site plan approval for a four-unit storage facility. The property's located south and west of Roscoe Road in the Orange Beach community. This is in Planning District 30. They are zoned B3, general business district. The property totals 1.41 acres. Uh, there is no traffic study required. Uh, the drainage narrative was prepared and stamped by Chris Lee from Leeve Engineering, and it was reviewed by the Bowman County P&amp;Z permit engineer. They do have a wetland delineation that was performed by Wetland Sciences. There's approximately .59 acres of jurisdictional wetlands on the subject property. Here's the location of the property within the county, the vicinity map, as well as our locator map, the adjacent property images, the availability letters, including sewer, power, and water. Here's their site map and an enlarged version of their site map. Um, I did intersperse the variances throughout this presentation. One of their first variance request is the reduced, uh, variance from the usable open space requirement of 20 percent. And their second variance is from the minimum lot size requirement of three acres, as they only have 1.41 acres. Here's their wetland delineation. They did receive approval from the Corps to fill .25 acres of jurisdictional wetlands on the property for access. And here's their floor plan, as well as their erosion control plan. Their third request for a subdivision variance includes the maintenance easement width around the northern perimeter of the detention pond. They ask for a reduction in that width along the northern side. Here's their landscaping plan. And their final subdivision variance request is regarding the stormwater detention facility to be located within the landscape buffer. Here's the future land use map. In terms of the staff analysis for the commissioned site plan, the proposed plan conforms to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The development pattern in the area is primarily commercial. We do see similar businesses approximately .3 miles south of, of the subject property, and this would support the current zoning and proposed use of the subject property. And we can conclude that the proposed storage facility complies with the master plan. In terms of the staff analysis and findings for the planned unit development, this four-unit facility is to be known as Binger Storage. Each of the units would be approximately 1,440 square feet, and they did request variances from four of the PUD requirements. And this is just a summary of those four variance requests. These were sta, uh, the applicant's responses to the applic, uh, application. In terms of the recommendations, uh, the first one, CSP 2503, staff recommends this case be approved with the following conditions. The specific conditions would be to approve the variance, as well as the planned unit development, and then include, uh, the general conditions outlined on the screen. For the planned unit development, staff is recommending the final site plan be approved with conditions. And this also includes approval of the variance, as well as the commissioned site plan, and include the general conditions outlined on the screen. And then finally, for the variance, staff is recommending approval of the, of the variance request. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. I think I stated pretty clearly in work session, but just be sure everybody knows, we're, we're gonna talk about all three of these individual, uh, items.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we will vote on them individually. So, if you have a question about any of them, let's, let's go ahead and I'll call Chris up if he needs to speak to something. Chris is here representing the, the applicant. So, first off, does anybody have any questions for staff on any portion of this application? Okay. Chris, did you have anything you wanted to speak to?
Uh, not myself, but-
All right. So, does anybody have any questions for Chris?
Yeah, I got a question about the wetland piece. So, it looks like based on your delineation, you've got .59 acres of wetland and you're filling .25?
That is correct.
I just, I, just 40 percent of that, over 40 percent, just, it looks like more fill than I would anticipate it to be.
So, we got the, when they pulled the permit, it was more than we actually needed.
Okay.
Uh, we have a permit to fill .25, but we're not going to with the, this set of construction plans.
You're basically gonna kinda grade out a, a pad for that road to come in?
Just enough to get the road and utilities in, yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. I know the timeline on those things, sometimes you have to request them before you-
Right.
Before you know the details of the site.
Because it takes a minute.
Yeah. That was it. That's all I had.
All right. Any other questions for Chris?
I do. On the, you know, I guess it's similar, I feel similar to the, one of the cases previous, the three variances. One is the 50 percent open space is one of the variances that we're not meeting. The other is the stormwater detention encroachment into the landscape buffers, the second. And the third one is, what was the third one?
There's actually four. That, one of them is the three acre.
Right.
And the other one is the maintenance easement.
Here's a summary slide.
My question for, I guess, Chris, I mean, it seems like, you know, is this a design thing, or why can't we get to the, you know?
How far off are we on the open space and how far off are we on the stormwater detention, you know?
So-
Can we not get these done with design and not have these variances?
So, and, and to be quite honest, number three came as a surprise to me, um, 'cause we were able to work it out on paper that we didn't have to have any of our stormwater detention in the, uh, the landscape easement on the west side of the property. There's a swale there to get water to the detention, but we were able to keep it out of there. At one point, we were using that area, and we used, we're trying to use it as a bio-swale, but we were able to manipulate the grades and just squish it in to just be behind the building. Um, and as far as the usable open space, uh, it, it's because wetlands can't count as usable open space. So, we're not using half of our property, but, you know, it's still open. So, but we're kinda pinched in, and that's why we're asking for the variance for that, 'cause we're leaving most of the wetlands alone.
Also, Michael, we talked about, if you were at work session through all that discussion, but the usable open space just does not fit commercial development. It's, it's meant more for residential development. So, that's, I don't think that's a big one for us to give up. It just-
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Chris? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Unless you have any questions or comments, I'm gonna close the public hearing. He was, Chris was the only one signed up. And, um, we will start with the, the variance request. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve SP 25-12, subject to staff conditions.
Okay. Mr. Weiss made a motion to approve the, the variance request. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Okay. Uh, Greg, a second to the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, uh, the chairman votes aye also. Motion carries. All right, now for the, um, I guess it really makes any difference. We'll do the CSP 25-03.
I'll make a motion to approve CSP 25-03, subject to staff conditions.
All right. Mr. Weiss made a motion approved. Have a second?
Second.
That was Scott. Scott seconded the motion. Any question on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye. Motion carries. All right. And then last is the PUD, 25-02.
I make a motion to approve PUD 25-02, subject to staff conditions.
All right. Have a second?
Mr. Davis seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye. Motion carries. All right, go to our last item, our items as such. Uh, this is open public hearing for case number CSP 2504, PUD 25-04, and SV 25-14, Southern Storage Solutions Phase Two. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item?
All right.
Ms. Rhodes?
This is CSP 2504, case PUD 2504, as well as case SV 2514 for Southern Storage Solutions. The request is site plan approval for additional storage buildings. The property's located south of County Road 32 and east of State Highway 181 in the Fairhope area. This is in Planning District 39, and they are zoned B3, general business district. The total property area is about 4.75 acres, and the total number of units requested is 30 additional units. No traffic study is required. Uh, the drainage narrative was prepared and stamped by Stephanie Groves of Gulf State Engineering, and it was reviewed and accepted by the permit engineer. And there are no wetlands on the property. Here's the location of the property within the county, the site map. Uh, the site map shows the original parcel. However, there was, um, a subdivision where they subdivided this 4.75 acres from the parent parcel. And here's the locator map, the adjoining property images, their availability letters, as well as their fire flow, uh, letter to the chief, and their fire flow test results. Here's their site plan, as well as their grading, drainage, and erosion control plan. Here's their first subdivision variance. They were requesting a reduction in the maintenance easement width around the perimeter of the detention pond from 20 feet to 10 to 15 feet, as you can see in the image below. Their second subdivision variance request would be the, um, reduction in the stormwater management facility outfall to be installed less than 25 feet from the property line. Here's their landscape plan along 181, and then a closer up look at that landscape plan, as well as the plant schedule. Their third variance would be regarding the stormwater detention facility, uh, which would be located within the landscape buffer. Here's the future land use map showing primarily low-impact development potential for the property. In terms of staff analysis and findings for the commissioned site plan, uh, the additional storage buildings conform to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. As mentioned earlier, this is low-impact development potential. The development pattern in the area is primarily agricultural and residential, and we do see a neighborhood center node about one mile from the subject property, and neighborhood center nodes support local serving businesses. And it can be concluded that the proposed storage building additions do comply with the master plan. In terms of the planned unit development, there will be two additional storage buildings, one approximately 9,000 square feet, and the second approximately 18,000 square feet for mini storage use. And they are requesting three variances from the planned unit development requirements. This is their letter of request for these variances, as well as a summary of the variances, and their application responses. In terms of the recommendations, staff is recommending for CSP 2504 that it be approved with the following conditions, that the variance request, as well as the planned unit development, is approved, and includes the general conditions outlined on the screen. For the planned unit development, staff is recommending approval with conditions, the specific condition being approval of the variance, as well as the commissioned site plan, and including the general conditions outlined on- plan, and including the general conditions outlined on the screen. And then for the variances, staff is recommending approval. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, we'll treat this one just like the last one, so any questions for staff on any of the three items? Okay, I have Ms. Grove sign up to speak. Do you wish to say anything? You'll just wait and see if you have a question?
I'll be answering questions.
Alright, so does anybody have any questions for Ms. Grove? She's the engineer representing the applicant. Okay. That's all I have signed up. Was there anybody else that didn't sign up to wish to speak on this? Alright, just making sure, because we're getting down to the last item, I see a few faces in the group. Alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing on this item. And we'll, just like the last one, we'll start with the variance request. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve SP 25-14, subject to staff conditions.
Okay, Mr. Vice has made a motion to approve the variance, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schamberger seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye, so the motion carries. Next will be CSP 25-04.
I make a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions.
Okay, Mr. Vice made a motion approved, do I have a second?
Second.
Scott seconded. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye, so motion carries. And then the PUD 25-04.
So moved, subject to staff conditions.
Alright, Mr. Vice made a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Scott seconded the motion. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye, so motion carries. Alright. So that's the last of our agenda items as far as the public hearings. I have no other business on here, public comments? Anybody signed up for public comments? Okay. Planning Commissioner comments. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this month we have- There we go. This month we have an update for what we do, starting to do every month now. Just a little reminder for the people that weren't here last month, we have our outline, we will give an update on ongoing projects. This month, we'll give you guys an update on some natural resource projects that we have ongoing around the county. Also, we'll give a summary of the rezoning actions by county commission, and there was quite a few of them last month. It was kind of the first month where it was the last batch that came through you guys and the first, so it was kind of a double dip in applications. But then summary of permits issued, and then our interagency coordination update. But with this, I'll turn it over to Ashley to do the natural resource update.
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to be here to kind of introduce y'all to a new component of natural resource planning with Baldwin County. We, you know, we do a lot of work, we do a lot of reviewing, a lot of inspection, and we work with our great team members in planning and zoning to make sure sites are compliant with state and federal and local regulations. But we also are breaking out into a new realm of some other things with managing some natural resource projects. So I'll just introduce you to a few of them that we're working on. First of all, we do have a grant through the Alabama Coastal Area Management Program. It's called the Meadows Parking Lot Improvements. If you're familiar with County Road 1 in Fairhope, Marianne Beach Road intersects 1, we own 133 acre parcel there. And we are, it's in the light green on the picture there, we are entertaining, or we actually have a grant to install a parking lot. So we are managing that through natural resource planning, and Highway will be installing the parking lot. We are handling all the permitting through the Corps of Engineers. And we're working with the state who owns 1,100 acres beside this park, and we will be doing trail systems through some of those acres. So this is just a real cool project. It's great that Highway and Mark and his team's gonna be able to implement it, and guess what we're waiting on? Our core permit! So that's what everyone says, so. But this is an exciting project that we're looking forward to coming very soon. Our goal is to have it completed by the fall, so, real cool project. And we have another exciting project that we're working with Highway. Highway's been the lead on this overall grant, but planning and zoning and natural resource planning's been, working with the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program to get some additional funds to complement what Highway has already done through some of the Go Mesa funds. But this is called the Lower Fish River Watershed Restoration. It's the Magnolia River constructed wetland and borrow pit, a mining pit remediation. It's located in Magnolia Springs. It's just across the river from the Magnolia Plantation Subdivision. The property kind of borders Charley Road and 26, it's kind of north of 26. But it is, Mark, do you remember how many acres this is that we purchased? Should know that.
It's more than 100.
Yeah, a little above 100 acres with several abandoned mining pits in it. And what we're gonna do here, it's really exciting, it's hard to see too, but we're gonna do an overflow channel to the south of the river, where we take some of the pressure off the river with the stormwater events. And this overflow channel will go into some constructed wetlands that will filter out impurities and sediments, and then flow further into some like regional detention areas or stormwater management areas. We're also gonna have long leaf pine restoration in some of the abandoned pit areas. We're gonna do native pollinator sections. And we have some goals for the future to maybe have some recreational uses with it, but right now, it's about restoring the habitat and getting it back to a natural resource that is benefiting Magnolia River. How many of y'all ever been in the cold hole? We're directly above the cold hole, and right now, it is so impacted with sediment from stream channel degradation and from projects in the watershed that a lot of complaints have been received. But this is upstream, this will help prevent additional impacts to it, but it's a real exciting project. It is a very large project, and we predict it will take a couple of years to do. It won't be as fast as the A Camp, but it's a very, very exciting. I think this could almost be at the scale of some of the Dolee Creek watershed work that I did in Daphne back when I was with that group, so this is very, very exciting. And then, I think Jay mentioned this last month. Jay talked about a new modeling tool that we've been using in the county to help Highway with culvert replacements and different things, and it's called AGWA, and it stands for Automated Geisha Watershed Analysis. So basically, and GEisha stands for Gritted Surface/Subsurface Hydrologic Analysis, but I'm not an engineer, I'm not gonna get into the weeds with y'all, but basically, this is a tool to help us with some of our new stormwater requirements. We'll be able to use this tool, because what we're doing is we're gonna install additional stream and weather stations throughout a couple watersheds, and we'll be able to use the data from these to, in the model, AGWA, to help us do these things right here. Develop and review design tools, we'll be able to use this information for detention flow workflow, culvert workflow, and then, as with y'all working on the long-term master planning, it can help us with land use workflow and detention workflow. So this is a really great tool that we're gonna be able to use. Not only does it help us with planning, but it also is helping us understand these really large events. Y'all remember April 6, when we had the huge rain event? We had some of our gauges show us that we had an exceedance of a 500-year discharge event, and this was like the next morning. We didn't have to wait on other resources to find out. So this tool, I think with, Highway's gonna really use this tool even in May, and planning and zoning is gonna be a great tool for us. But we're excited about it, and all of these, this funding's coming in in a few months, so this, the additional gauges will be implemented hopefully fall, winter. With that, I have, do I have any questions? That was fast. Jay told me to be fast.
That was good.
We've got to go home, right?
Ashley, on that Meadows Trail, where's that connecting to on the north end? It looked like you had a loop with kind of a connector to the north.
Okay, so there's King's Way, so the state owns land all the way up to King's Way, but it'll come back around to the Marianne Beach. They own land on the Marianne Beach. There'll probably be some boardwalks eventually, but this is just the very, very beginning step, yeah.
Listen, gotta start somewhere.
Gotta start somewhere, and we might, we actually entertain the idea, that project you're working on, bringing more trails through, down to that area around the Marianne Beach with the access for bicycling.
Awesome.
Okay, anymore? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay. So yeah, we're really excited about the AGWA tool, about what it's gonna allow us to do. We're on our current planning stuff, we're reviewing subdivisions and different things, so we're making sure we're, you know, looking at things on the watershed level versus the, you know, the site level. But it's gonna be a great tool for us to use for long-range planning, too. Alright, so the zoning actions by county commission, like I said, there were several. The first is the Parker property was RSFE to B2. It's there along Pleasant Road, it's over in District 15. It was rezoned. There's a lot of, if y'all remember, there's a lot of commercial activity. This is just barely east of, I'm sorry, just barely west of that big PRD that was approved along 181, Big She's Development. So it's definitely an area that's just kind of converting from a large estate lot to more of a higher intensity use, which is what's called for in that area. The second one you all heard was the Bayview Partners, RA to RMH, is along Highway 90 just outside of Robertsdale here. That was also approved, just adjacent to an existing mobile home park, so it's consistent with what's going on there. Then the Ewing property, which is over in the Suckey Road area. I know we've had a lot of different applications in that area, and they've all been pretty much unanimously denied, because this is kind of one of those areas that's, the master plan's kind of calling for more intense use, but everything around it's more larger state lot or agriculture, and so that's kind of been the trend that everyone's keeping with, is kind of keeping that larger lot approvals out there. So in this case, they were actually wanting to downzone it, primarily because the RSFE in this plain district doesn't allow the secondary dwelling to be more than 60% of the gross floor area of the primary dwelling. This is one of those local provisions in that area. It's kind of outdated, antiquated things. They were trying to rezone it just to get, to find a way to build two larger homes. Quite honestly, what we really need to explore, and I'm, you know, is, if you all remember, we removed that requirement from the master zoning ordinance, but it still lies in some of the local provisions. This is one of those areas that we probably need to look at, trying to approach the community and say, do you want to remove that 60% rule out of this? Because it's really an outdated thing. I mean, the people have 20 acres, you know, it doesn't matter if they have two 4,000 square feet houses, right? So I expect we'll probably come back to you all with some, maybe some minor tweaks to that, if the community wants that out there. But they did deny the rezoning because that just wasn't the right tool to accomplish what they're trying to accomplish, you know? It doesn't need to be agriculture, it needs to be RSFE, because it is an existing platted subdivision. The next one was the Gibbon Property, which was a rezoning and a PRD. This is down just outside of Orange Beach, and honestly, they were gonna be in Orange Beach until Orange Beach started de-anexing everything on top, north of the canal, so they came to us. It's a challenging site, but it is a low-density development, it only has 48 units, so it did get approved, both of them. This is the little PRD plan, it's little cottages, they have a very narrow strip of uplands that they're utilizing, but, you know, it's, it was approved with the site plan they're showing here. So like I said, it's 48 lots, it's still only two units an acre, so it's very low density, like most of the site is wet, so very low-intensity development. The SR Development, which is, I believe came through you all, this is next to the Dollar General there at 32 and 87, rezoned from RA to B2, which is obviously consistent with what's going on in that intersection there. The CM Counseling, this is on County Route 64, just by Rigsby Road. It's an existing home, they're converting to a professional office, a counselor, professional counseling office. And of course, we see that happening all along the 64 corridor, where what has been some of these older homes are now being converted to commercial type uses, which we would expect there. The Hilltop Fund, RSFE to RSF1 was approved, this is there in District 35. It's a very small site, basically they were just trying to rezone it to be consistent with what's going on around it, just make two lots out of it instead of one, very low-key thing. Cotton Property, RSF1 to RA was approved, this is out in, I believe it's in District 39, if I'm not mistaken, or maybe it's 26. Anyway, that was consistent with what's going on around there. And then Cypress Break, RA to RR, this is very close to the, one of the mini storage cases y'all just heard today, but, you know, that Roscoe Road area is having a lot of the storage, boat and RV storage things going there, which is fine, it's a very isolated area, it's very commercialized when you get out near the Beach Express and everything, so it kind of makes sense with a boat ramp right there, the county boat ramp very close by, and it's not around a lot of residences, so it's kind of a good spot for those type uses. So they zoned, rezoned to RR to allow for some more mini storage things in that area, some more boat storage. Finally, the DIAS Property, this is adjacent to a rezoning in a case that came through, you know, a couple of years ago, on 54, I guess this is. But, you know, they zoned RA to RSF2, again, it's kind of filling in that area of development, which, you know, is kind of surrounded by Daphne and a lot of higher intensity development already. So that was the cases that the county commission heard. Going forward, looking, as we talked about during the work session, you know, looking at kind of our, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah?
Oh, and it's in particular to the one on the lower end of the county, you said it was the larger, higher quantity of wetland.
Have we had some of the developers implemented, you know, the, when you use LID, low intensity development, practices are going through, you know, and actually being able to say this is, you know?
We will complete this as a LID project.
Yeah, and this was an interesting one, because like I said, they're pretty limited on the amount of uplands they have, and they border tightly influenced water bodies, so they don't really have any detention requirement. All they need to do is treat their water. So that's part of the thing, as we get in the construction plan, preliminary plat, which you guys will hear the next month or two, and then, but also construction plan review, we'll, you know, we'll have to work with them to make sure they're implementing different rain gardens and different things to filter the stormwater as it's leaving and getting into the wetlands. But, you know, because it's all tightly influenced, there really is no flooding risk, you know, so we don't really need detention, we just need to make sure it's filtered, so we get any contaminants out before it enters in the water. But, but so, from a, kind of an LID approach, yeah, it's gonna be very low impact, because the houses are gonna be elevated over, you know, actually part of over wetlands, there's, you know, whatever runoff they have off the road's gonna have to go through, you know, filtration, so it's gonna, it's gonna be very low impact from the size of the site it is. Before I move on, any other questions about any other zoning cases? So as we do every month, going through a little bit of our permitting trends, so this is all the way through the end of May, I can remind y'all, we're kind of, the report falls basically a month behind, because it takes a little while to get all this stuff out of CitizenServe. But we're looking at our number of preliminary plats that have been issued to date, based on the last two years through May, you know, staying pretty consistent. The final plats, as we talked about during the work session, that's kind of really where the good metric, as you monitor growth and see how we're trending, is staying pretty consistent. The subdivision exemptions, you know, there's been a lot of those, every year, there's a ton of subdivision exemptions, and we're constantly trying to work through how to make sure we manage that properly. And PUDs are kind of trending down right now. I expect that to kind of jump up now that we're reviewing the multi-tenant structures through PUDs now. That's gonna jump up, but that's because of a change in the regulation that's gonna make that go up, based on the trend.
We have more of those today than we had in previous months.
I know, yeah, yeah. So looking at kind of the number of units, so the preliminary plot lots, obviously in 23, there was a huge spike. There was a couple of very, very large developments that were approved in the beginning, or the first half of 23. So you, but I think that was a little bit of an anomaly, you can kind of see we're trending pretty consistent. I wish we could easily get- I wish we could easily get back, you know, to five years, but that's a little hard to pull, about that information that far back right now. But if you look at, you know, last year compared to this year, we're staying pretty consistent there. Final plat lots, so you're kind of seeing that trending up, but, you know, it takes a couple of years for preliminary plats to cycle through the process, so that uptick in final plat lots is kind of a result of some of those large number of lots that were approved in preliminary plats in '23. So we'll probably still see that kind of trend a little bit upwards. Obviously, it won't be as drastic of a spike as preliminary plats, because like we talked about, not all preliminary plats make it through the whole process. Some of them, you know, disappear. Subdivision exemption lots, you know, I kind of point this out every, every month, is that if you look at the comparison of the number of lots we're entering the market on, through exemptions versus final plats, there's not a drastic amount of difference. And that's why, you know, something that we're really looking at and trying to work with the legislature to figure out how we really handle this subdivision exemption issue that's going on. Because I don't, the way it's been used and implemented, I don't think was ever the intent of the law that was passed, so we're working to try to clean a lot of that up over time. But the PUD units, obviously, there was a big spike in '23 for some reason. I guess it was a big, large development, but that's been trending down. I will say that will probably trend back up a little bit now because of the multi-tenant buildings. So for zoning cases, rezonings, you know, we did have a spike over the last couple of years. Like I mentioned last month, that's most likely the result of, we had three new planned districts become zoned within the last few years, and so there's a lot of kind of corrective rezonings going on in some areas of the county. So that's probably a good piece of why there's a big spike. PRDs are, you know, kind of staying pretty flat. We have had one so far this year, and it was actually an RV part that existed, they were modifying it, is what was going on with them. The zoning variances are trending down, which means that our changes in our regulations, where we're, we've kind of cleaned up a lot of the discrepancies in vague areas are working, because like I've always said, your variances should be, zoning variances should be a very difficult thing to get. You should have a true hardship. And so once, now that we've got the regulations nice and clean and concise, we're seeing that trend going down like it should, because, you know, things are fitting better than they should. Commercial commissioned site plans, you know, they're down a little bit from the last couple of years, but not drastically. The last thing, well, before I move on this, is there any questions about any of that On this, we don't really have any inter-agency coordination updates, other than what we've already talked about with some of the grant projects we're working on. You know, those obviously have a lot of different agency participation and funding participation, so that, you know, we're always working on things like that, and working with the individual cities on our ETJ agreements and how we process things that are just on the outskirts of the city, so, you know, that's kind of an ongoing thing, but there's nothing, nothing specific to report on those items. But anyway, I hope the trends are helpful. I think that's a big piece of the puzzle, how we, how we do our job and how we monitor growth, make sure that we're seeing how things are happening and being proactive on how your land development occurs in Baldwin County versus reactive. That's the goal, is to make sure we identify trends early and adjust as we need to. Glad to answer any questions.
I have a question about the PUDs and all the variances from earlier. Should we look at proposed text amendment to address that, so that...
Yeah, the ones from today's cases, yes. And we kind of, you know, the typical process, when we start identifying things like that, we kind of keep a little working list and say, you know, so we don't go at every little thing, go for a minute. We try to group several of them together and then clean it all up at one time. So we're making that list, and definitely, you all saw, for the subdivision regulations, the open space requirement for commercial, that was just kind of one of those unintended things. Like, obviously, usable open space doesn't really apply to commercial uses, and that's something that was not clear when we made our amendment, and we'll clean that up next time, but we'll just kind of have to work through that in the meantime. And there were a couple other things, like I know that Mr. Pumper, you talked about the maintenance easement around the ponds on some of these commercial things. Obviously, that's not really that appropriate for a commercial use either, that's more for piece simple lots. So there's some little clarification items like that that we'll need to clean up in there.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Some of this open space around some of these commercial properties is not necessarily a bad thing. I mean, I would say I was felt like I was a little fussy, but, I mean, you're looking at three of these, and we're thinking along the same things, and it feels like there's somewhat smaller places that we're encroaching a lot in, and, you know, a little bit of...
Lots in here as well, you know, let's, you know...
Let's maybe only paint two of the variances instead of three.
And I think over time, the development community will adjust their designs to better conform. Like I said, this is a little bit of a learning process for everyone right now, they're just kind of getting there, but, you know, I think the, for these commercial sites, we're looking at, you know, the overall open space, they're pretty much meaning the amount of green space. When I say overall open space, how much, you know, green space is out there. It's really about the usable open space, and Mr. Pumper pointed out, like, that doesn't really apply to a commercial business anyway. So we just didn't differentiate during the...
I guess something else I see out in the community is a little spot like this, and, you know, it's a, we dig a little ditch that goes around almost the perimeter of it, and, you know, this is functioning as our stormwater detention and our landscape buffer, the plants die, and, you know, we end up with some little burn system, and, you know, it's, you know, some of these wits and, you know, what we're designing, I mean, you know, it's different...
Open spaces one in some of the others, you know...
I say we're gonna, we're gonna get good visuals of these final products soon enough and say, you know, hey, let's, you know, the appropriate things will come to surface, or we're just okay with these variances coming repetitively, because we're gonna get unapproved.
Right. And I think, you know, the real goal with those, you know, the open space and the buffers on these commercial businesses, it's really more about the buffering than anything, is what we want to do. We want to minimize the visual impacts and minimize the impacts to the adjacent roadways, adjacent, you know, view corridors, adjacent properties. So of all the things that really matter, those landscape buffers you're talking about are probably one of the most important things we look at. But, you know, prior to, you know, the rate change in unzoned areas, we weren't even allowed, allowed to look at stormwater requirements for commercial uses in unzoned areas. And so this, having this defined the way we have it now, that we can make sure that, you know, we're getting proper buffering and we're getting proper stormwater, and those are the two major issues that we really want to accomplish for those things. You know, the other things beyond that are fairly minor when it comes to commercial uses. It's really those two things that, but that's, the PUD route is the only way we can, in unzoned areas, is the only way we can really manage that.
Okay, anybody have anything else? That is on your part, Jay. Do you have anything?
No, anything else, does her?
All right. Our next meeting's August the 7th. Nothing else, we are adjourned.